Mission, agenda for April, I'm sorry, yeah. Twenty twenty, yeah, so I'm gonna call the main to order. And can we have the roll call, please?
Alright, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, can everyone hear us?
Yeah.
I got you, Gerald.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Commissioner Aragon.
Can you hear me? President.
Commissioner Duffel.
Present.
Commissioner Griffiths.
Present.
Chairman Nindell.
Present.
And Chairman Buchanan.
Present. Thank you very much. We're gonna go with the pledge of allegiance, I understand you have a flag up?
Yes.
Alright. Otherwise, I brought a little one here. Alright. So I'll, I'll go ahead and leave the pledge, it's alright. Those of you who can stand, please do so. Be mindful of your cameras. Alright, pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag.
Flag.
Of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Okay, let's move forward to the approval of the agenda. Any, any concerns or anything about the agenda that the commission wants to bring up?
No.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner, do we have a second?
All second.
Don, Don second.
Thank you very much, whoever seconded, seconded. Alright, we're, we're gonna be clunky for a while, so we just love this anyway, okay? Just, you know, show it some love. Anyway, so all in favor, do we have to do a roll call on this one, Joe?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Aragon. Commissioner Duffel.
Aye.
Commissioner Griffiths.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Nindell.
Aye.
And Chairman Buchanan.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go to the minutes of the regular meeting for March tenth, twenty twenty. Can't believe it was that long ago, it's almost a century.
Right.
Well, when you're homebound, that's the way it works. Okay, anybody have any corrections to the minutes?
Commissioner Duffel, I'd like to move to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved, who's second?
All second.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Aragon. Okay. Let's go ahead, and do we have to do a roll call on this one too, Gerald?
Yes, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Hi. Commissioner Duffel.
Aye.
Commissioner Griffiths.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Nindell.
Aye.
Chairman Buchanan.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, public comment at this time. Pursuant to state law. Any person may comment on an item which is not on the agenda, please state your name for the record. Does anybody have, are there comments? At this point?
No, Mr. Chair, no one registered for the general public comment section of the agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we'll move on then to the first public hearing. Tentative parcel map. Number three seven eight seven seven. Some division of one parcel into two equal parcels of one point four seven acres each. The applicant is Robert Shay Miano. Of DHS Investment Holdings, I understand he's present.
Yes, Mr. Chair, it looks like he is here.
Okay, good, so. Let's go ahead and start with the staff report.
Rebecca, I can't hear you.
The applicant proposes a tentative parcel map three seven eight eight seven on an almost three acre parcel. The site is located east of Cabot Road and south of the intersection of Two Bunch Palms Trail. It is a rectangular parcel and generally flat. This project is consistent with the current general plan and zoning and was part of a previously approved project. That has previously expired, they are proposing to just do a portion of the map at this time, so it does have a different number. And at that time that it was previously approved, they had a mitigated neck deck that was approved in February two thousand seventeen, and that still remains. Hurt net for this proposal. The applicant's here, and I'm here to ask any answer, answer any questions you may have, and we're recommending approval.
Okay, are there any questions of city staff on this one?
No, sir.
No, I've got nothing.
Alright, good. With that. Okay, I just lost video, but it's okay, I'll get it back, I know. I'm gonna go ahead and without any questions, go ahead and open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Take testimony from the applicant. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, excellent. Do you have a comment or? Anything to testify on this, on this issue?
No, I'm basically available to answer any questions that you may have and ask for your approval.
Okay, excellent. Let's see. Is there any testimony? In favor of this item? Hearing none, I'm gonna move on to, is there any test, public testimony for those opposed? Hey, anybody with a neutral position? Hearing none of the above. I don't believe you need to make a rebuttal, sir. So let me turn the page. I have to follow a script, which is a good thing. Okay, so at this point, I'm closing the public hearing. Do we have any discussion on this item?
I just wanna clarify that the recommendation is to approve parcel map three seven eight eight seven, subject to the findings listed and the conditions of approval in the staff report.
Thank you very much, anybody else?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Duffel. Like to make that motion to approve based on Rebecca's statements just now, along with the conditions of approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Duffel, is there a second?
Oh, second. Commissioner Griffiths will second.
Okay, I think the tie goes the runner, we'll go with. With Don seconding. Well, I know, it's the same time. Okay. So, any discussion? Hearing none. Are we gonna need a roll call vote by voice again?
Yes, for every item, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Aragon.
Aye.
Commissioner Duffel.
Aye.
Commissioner Griffiths.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Nindell.
Aye.
Chairman Buchanan.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, congratulations there, we're, we're finished with this one.
Okay, I don't know if you can hear me, but if so, I thank you.
Alright. Okay, good. Okay, let's move on to item number two. And this is interesting, this is a good thing, I wanna talk about this a little bit. Development permit number twenty dash five. An application for development for eleven single family homes within the Sunset Springs residential development. Track map, map, excuse me. Number three one two three five. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes. Okay, so good evening, Mr. Chair and planning commissioners. The project is for the development of eleven new single family homes within the Sunset Springs residential development. The project is located north of Mission Lakes Boulevard on the west side of Sonora Drive within the residential little district. This slide shows already existing homes within the Sunset Springs development. The proposed homes will be built and designed so they are consistent with the development standards and architectural of the previously approved development permit and design. The proposed elevations have a desert contemporary Mediterranean design utilizing stucco exterior finishes with an accent trim, clay roof tiles, and optional stone veneer accents. The two models are staggered and reversed with optional gated courtyards, and specific models are not repeated on adjacent lots to vary the architectural along the street front of it. That is why they're table outlining the proposed models, the allocation of interior floor space, and the architectural finishes. Staff would like to note that a condition has been added as condition number two for the applicant to install a tan block wall to match existing surrounding properties. The typical standard courtyard will utilize drought tolerant landscaping with a combination of tree shrubs and small accent plants to balance aesthetic and water usage. On June fifteen thousand four, the city council approved track map number three one two three five for a sixty-three lot subdivision. They also approved development permit number thirty-five dash zero four and design review number twenty-three dash four for the residential government architectural design and landscaping review. Then, on June. Twenty thirteen, Cali Valley Housing Coalition received approval for development permit number zero six zero eight and design review number zero eight zero eight for the architectural design for thirty-two new single family residences. On June fifteen thousand four, the city council approved the original project and in doing so adopted the mitigated negative declaration for the project. Pursuant to sequel regulations, once an M and D has been adopted for your project, no subsequent review needs to be completed unless there are substantial changes to the project that warrant additional review. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to city council for approval of development permit number twenty dash five for development of eleven new single family homes within the Sunset Spring residential development track map number three one two three five, subject to the findings and conditions of approval. That includes staff support, and I am available, and the applicant is also available to any question. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia, at this time, will entertain any questions from any of the commissioners, do you have any questions?
This is Commissioner Griffiths, I have a question regarding fencing and what the regulations are around fencing for these properties. Are, is there zero fencing in the front, or is it required a substantial distance back, or what's the fencing requirement?
So originally, the applicant was requesting vinyl fencing. And existing out there is tan block wall, that's why we have added a condition to the, for the applicant to add block wall to match whatever is existing out there currently.
And the block wall, my other question is what sort of material, because block wall can come. Really, really cheap looking and that will disintegrate quickly, or it can be of a certain quality, so I'm wondering if there are any standards in place there.
It, it has to be a block wall to match building permit and building code standards. And these are for the fences in the backyard, they did show some courtyard fences that you were talking about kind of in the front, but they have to be set back to the full distance of the house. And those are permitted to be the vinyl courtyard, but in the back, they would be required to do the block wall.
Okay, what sort of block wall is that, actually, is it? You know, it, it, what's the standard of construction, the color's less relevant, I know it's gray or tan or something, but the color's less relevant than the standard of construction, so I wanna make sure that that's all part of the. The commission for the neighborhood.
The, the city has block wall standards, it has to be built to the city block wall standards on type of construction, and they will be required to beat those standards.
Okay.
We have a standard handout for any homeowner who wants to put a block wall together, and it has to beat those footings and the, you know, and everything so that it is built to, to stay up per building code.
Right, so there will be no wood, you know, wood, wood. Wood not allowed, or?
Correct, no wood.
And what about chain link?
No chain link is permitted. It's, it'll have to be fully block wall and on the back fences.
Okay, and in the front?
The front, they are proposing some with a courtyard, and those will be permitted to be vinyl as it's shown on the elevation.
Okay.
Any other question? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, no, I apologize, that's important because it's, especially in the courtyard area, it's really important to maintain a nice visual. For the neighborhood, and in the back, it's important to maintain privacy and or. The inability to access, so I'm okay with this, if it's block wall and vinyl in the front.
Um, any other questions?
Yeah, yes, I have one.
Go ahead.
When I was looking at the, the plans for the individual houses, you know, the models and the lots, there, one, at least one of the plans, the home plans. Has in the yard, it says. It refers to RV resort living slash rental. In other words, some of the models have space on the, on the property for an RV, it looks like, and. And one of the diagrams, like I said, it refers to RV resort living slash rental, what does that mean? Are they, are they, is this builder saying you can, they're making space for RVs for the purpose of renting them out if owners want to?
Great question.
That won't be permitted, and we can definitely add a condition to note that, that people cannot live out of the RV.
Yeah, 'cause remember, at the council meeting, even this last council meeting, Russell Betts raised the issue of if space is designed for RVs on the property where your home is, will it be designed to code?
Correct, so if they advertise that they are selling the home with RV parking, the city council wants to ensure that it is properly paved. That they don't sell it as dirt and say it's RV parking, that they, in order to market it as such, that it be paved, so we can make sure that. If you wanna again recommend that as well, that, that we can add that to the conditions.
Right, I just raised it because it's not in all of the house plans, I only saw it on one or, one or two of the designs. And like I say, it shows a space on the side of the house for an RV, but it doesn't.
They are offering it as an option, optional RV parking.
I, I was just curious, is it for the purpose of renting them out, which I wouldn't be too excited about, but.
Well, exactly. This is, this is Don Griffiths, I, I'm completely in agreement. If you, if you own an RV and you need a space to put it, or a boat, or whatever, fill in the blank, then you should be able to put it on your property, but not to rent out. Full stop.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying, well, well, my, I can work on wording for a condition right now and get back to you.
Okay.
Sounds like a good idea to me, anybody else?
This is Commissioner Duffel, one quick question since the RV parking came up. On the RV parking on those particular lots, are the setbacks conforming with current code for RV parking in residential areas?
My understanding is as long as it's in the backyard and on a paved surface, that it is permitted to be stored in the backyard.
Okay, there's no fire code distancing as far as access for a fire department six feet on each side between the house and the fence?
No, as long as the, it's just being stored there, which is all that they're permitted to do, which is store it, and nobody's living in it, there's no fire code requirement.
Okay, very good, I just wanted to make sure, I remember at one point, one of the commissions discussing an RV parking ordinance, and I wasn't aware if it had been changed or not, so I wanted to make sure I cleared that up for myself. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, sir.
Alright. So, can I open the public hearing now? Okay, good, I'm opening the public hearing. Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chair, so there is someone that is joining via phone number ending in three three three, I can check to see if that is the applicant.
Okay, could you please?
Hi there, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, is this the applicant for this item?
Yes, it is, my name is Gary Weintraub with LaRmarc Homes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, first off, I would like to say good evening to everybody, and I, we appreciate the commission and staff for working through these trying times to try to help keep construction moving, it's very much appreciated in. These historical times that we're going through. We wanted to compliment you and thank you again. I am open for any questions that you may have, but I'd also like to make a comment on the block walls behind the houses that condition number two reflects, if that's possible.
Please go ahead.
Yes, the original product that we were gonna put up, there was vinyl fencing on the sides, front and rear, and the new condition came in. Number two, that we were required to put block walls on the fronts, sides and rear. And we were wondering if there is a compromise that we put block walls on the side of the house that faces the street. In the front of the houses that face the street, but behind the, the block wall returns, that could be possibly vinyl fencing.
And the reason why you're asking this, for this. Is?
It's just a process that we go through to try to streamline the construction, to eliminate having to access dirt. Lessen the cost, so we can put the values and other things like full backsplashes or granite countertops and those, those type of items. But from the street, it would be conforming with the, the original and the existing model homes that are present there in the neighborhood.
Okay. Any council members have any, or commission members have any questions?
Don does.
Go ahead, Don.
Yeah, thank you, you know, I understand the appreciation for granite countertops, which aren't really that expensive, having constructed a few homes myself. However, the appeal from the street is really more desirable from what the city and the planning commission is looking for. So a few more dollars spent there versus on granite countertops is how my vote would go.
Yes, I can appreciate that, but from the front of the, the street view or the street corridor there, everything would have block wall in the front, it would be behind the fence that would. The, if the planning commissioners give their consent, that we would just put vinyl back there, just like if the backyard, you know, nobody should be able to see in somebody's backyard what, what they do back there, that's their own personal domain, so that was part of the reasoning as well. If it's considered, I mean, we're not gonna jeopardize the job if it, if it can be taken in consideration, but it's just a request.
Understood, I, I just, it's the, the critical part is maintaining the look and feel as you're driving down the street to a lovely community in desert hot springs. So that has to be maintained.
And if that concession, understanding that the, from the street, that you're driving down there, that's all you would see is block wall, it would be behind what's behind the block wall, that would be the vinyl fencing. I could do an exhibit if that would help make a clearer understanding, I just, I just was wondering if the, if the planning commission would consider that a concession to the new condition that was applied.
Any, any other questions or comments on this one?
Planning Commissioner Duffel, I'll go ahead and make a comment on this, so we can try and hopefully get past the fencing issue. I think the block wall exhibit that was added in by staff is a great addition to complete the continuity of the development. If you've got one thing there, let's not go changing it up and creating a different product. You're, you're, you, you don't wanna shortchange the neighbors that are already there, or you don't wanna shortchange the people that are, that are gonna be moving in. So as far as the, the fencing goes, I think I would have to personally agree on no vinyl and doing strictly block wall just to maintain the continuity of the development, the integrity of the development.
Anybody else?
I think, I think the longevity of the fence will be better with block rather than, than Liso, I agree with Commissioner Duffel on the look and. Of the block fence, better.
Hey. Jim, do you have anything?
No, I drove through the neighborhood today, or yesterday, I mean, and I looked at the walls, I'm, I'm, I, I agree with everyone else, block is the way to go. We've, you know, this has come up before in the past, and I, I think we need to be consistent.
Thank you, anybody else?
Mr. Commissioner Duffel, once we move on, if Rebecca has made some modifications, when you're ready for a motion, I'd be prepared to form one.
Okay, well, give me a second here, 'cause I know, none of us can see each other, so it's kinda difficult, but. I, I basically agree with the rest of the commission. Although I'm always interested in seeing how people can cut costs a little bit without, without damaging the. The integrity of the. The.
Community.
Community, thank you, thank you, Don, but at the same time, I do agree with the, the commission on this. But at the same time, I do agree with the, the commission on this one. So I'm all in favor of what the commission has decided. And if Mr. Duffel has a motion, I'm really tickled to hear it.
Rebecca, have you, have you made that addition yet?
Yes, so I, I put out two, I have two recommended, from what I've heard, two recommended conditions being proposed to be at, added. The first is RV space shown shall not be used or approved for rental or as a living unit. And the second one is if the houses are marketed for RV spaces, they shall be paved and meet municipal code requirements prior to sales.
Okay, Mr. Chair, based on that, I would like to motion to make a recommendation to the city council to approve development permit number 20-5 to develop 11 single-family homes within the Sunset Springs residential development with the two additions that Ms. Dimin just read off for us.
Linda, do, do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, Jim, thank you very much. With that, is there any further discussion on this issue? Oh, wait a second.
Yeah, wait a second is right. I, I want to talk about setbacks.
Yeah, we're not exactly done yet, I'm sorry. The, the motion kind of came forward a little quick. Dawn has a question about setbacks and also the applicant has a right under the, public hearing rules to rebut what we have to say. So there's a little bit of...
I'm wondering what the setbacks are. So even if you have a paved, this, that and the other, you can't, I don't think you should be able to park your RV like right up against the road, even if it's paved. Like what are the setbacks for all of this kind of stuff?
So for RV parking, there are no setbacks in terms of the side and the rear, but it does have to be behind the fenced backyard. So they cannot park it and store it in the front yard, in front of the street.
Okay, does the same, does the same go for like, I mean, I know there are probably not a lot of, not a lot of boaters around here, but the same goes for any other recreational vehicles or this, that or the other?
Correct. The storage, there, there's, you're only allowed to park or store recreational vehicles for so long, like you can park on the street just like any other car, but they're only allowed to be there, I believe, 72 hours. And when you store it, you're going to have to store it on an approved surface, and, and I believe it's required to be behind the, in the backyard area, behind a fence.
Right. I, I just want to maintain the pristine look or start to get a pristine look in our lovely city.
Yeah, this, this doesn't change any of the, they would have to follow municipal code and whatever the municipal code requirements are. That's all we're recommending to make sure that they, they follow the municipal code for the RV storage.
Right, okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm being a little painful on this, but it's, I've seen so many ugly things driving around with RVs and boats and this and that, cars on wheels, and I just want to avoid that moving forward. It does not help the city or the property values of the owners.
Okay, are, are we finished with this discussion? Because if we are, we, we need to go back to the public hearing and see if there's any public testimony in favor of this motion or this issue. Do we have, do we have anybody who is in favor? Do we have any who's opposed? Anybody have a neutral position? Okay, thank you very much. The applicant ha, now has an opportunity, with all this discussion and everything, has an opportunity to rebut whatever we had to say. So, sir, do you have anything you have to say about this?
No, Commissioners, I, I think we can live up with those conditions that Rebecca was bringing forth, as well as condition number two. If that's the way the commission wants to roll it.
All right, sir. That's, that's excellent. Anything else? Okay. Unless there are no further comments here, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And we've already kind of jumped ahead and had discussion with the staff. Do we have any further discussion? Anybody?
No.
All right, thank you. Thanks for being patient with me. At this point, I'm closing the public hearing. And moving on to a recommendation to approve, and I believe we have a motion on the table.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I restate my motion.
Thank you so much. Sorry for that, but we have to, we have to follow the procedure.
Absolutely. You're 100% correct, sir.
All right. Do we have a second? Jim, Jim Nindell is seconding. Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Any further discussion? With that, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Aragon?
Aye.
Commissioner Duffel?
Aye.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nindell?
Aye.
Chairman Buchanan?
Aye. Okay, sir, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Commissioners and staff. Much appreciated.
Excellent. We're going to go right on to item number three, unless anybody needs a break.
I'm good.
Everybody good?
I'm good, Mr. Chair.
All right, so far I'm good too. So this is a good thing. All right, so number three, tentative parcel map number 37832 TM-20-4. For subdivision of, excuse me, because my screen is not looking quite right. I have to go back to my, my paper, excuse me. For subdivision of lots 2 through 37, located on the west side of Little Morongo Road, between 18th Avenue and 20th Avenue. Request subdivision of, request from Mission Springs Water District. We have a staff report, please.
Yes, let me share this. So as stated, this is a subdivision of 36 lots into three parcels, so it's not breaking them up, but containing them. The applicant is Mission Springs Water District. They do have existing facilities on the site. And as mentioned, it's located on Little Morongo between 18th and 20th Avenue. It's consistent with the general plan and zoning. And it is exempt through CEQA under Class 15 Minor Land Divisions. And staff recommends approval subject to the findings and conditions listed. That's all I have.
Okey dokey. Anybody have any questions of Rebecca?
No.
Okay. It would be helpful, because I can't see anybody. If you could say either yes or no.
No.
Okay, Dawn, are you okay with the? All right, good.
No. What did you, why did you say no, Richard?
What's that?
Who said no?
I did.
Think anybody did, did they?
Oh, okay, I'm good, I'm good. I'm ready to rock.
Okay, I'm, I'm just asking out of courtesy that, because we can't see each other that well. If, if I ask a question, does anybody have a question? And if nobody does, if they could all just say no? If that would be okay? Or if they do, say yes and then ask your question? Would that be okay?
That works for me, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Dawn, does that work for you? Okay, I'm going to take that as a whatever. We'll move on. We have the staff report, please.
We just had the staff report, so I don't think the applicant's here. So if we're ready to open...
I apologize.
Public hearing.
I do have to open the public hearing nonetheless. So the applicant is not present, is that correct? Okay. So there's no testimony, is there any testimony in favor of this? Is there anybody opposed? Anybody have a neutral position? Okay, there's no need for rebuttal. So I'm going to close the public hearing at this point. Do we have any discussion or questions to the staff? Anybody have any questions?
This is Commissioner Duffel, no.
Okay, good.
No.
No.
Thank you. All right. So with that, oh, I will entertain a motion at this point.
Commissioner Duffel...
Dawn is connecting back in audio, so if you want to wait a second for her to be back in the meeting.
Okay, great, that would be helpful.
Very good. Mr. Chair, when we're ready, I do have a formed motion.
Okay, great.
Are you there?
Dawn, are you with us?
Looks like she's back in and connecting, so...
Okay, we're, we're fine. We're not in a big rush.
Dawn, can you hear us? Gerald, what do you suggest how we should move forward?
Yeah.
Okay, looks like she's back on.
For a minute, I apologize. I don't know what happened.
Are you there, Dawn?
Yeah, I'm back.
Good.
Something happened. I, I, I dropped for a second. I don't know. I'm new to Zoom, so we'll figure it out.
It's okay. Where did we lose you?
You lost me about three minutes ago.
So I think we're just ready for a motion or any just questions and discussion.
I'm good, I'm good, I'm good with, yeah, I, I'm good with everything. The only questions I have are on item four, so we're, I'm good, approved.
So it's item number three, okay? So you're okay?
We're good. Item number three, fine, all good.
Splendid. So Commissioner Duffel, you have a, you have a motion, is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I'd like to motion to approve tentative parcel map number 37832 as staff has presented.
Okay, do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Aragon. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Aragon?
Aye.
Commissioner Duffel?
Aye.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nindell?
Aye.
Chairman Buchanan?
Aye.
Unanimously?
Okay. Moving right along with the tough stuff. Does anybody need a break?
No, I need a, Gerald, can you resend me the link? Because when I got disconnected from everything, I lost the link. I have it on my phone. I'll try and figure it out. Oh, here we go.
Well, I'm also, I'm also going to read it, Dawn, if that helps.
Okay, that's fine. But I like to look at it. So if Gerald can send it to me, that'd be great. If not, I'll listen to you. Because I love hearing your voice, Larry.
I'm so sorry. Okay. Because God knows I love my voice, so there you go.
Yeah, you and me both.
Yeah, I know. Hey, I'm going to go ahead and read number four.
Number four, A, is one of the things I wanted to talk about, which is why I want to look at it. Oh, here we go. Click here to view the agenda. There we go. I got it, I got it. I'm on.
Okay.
Don't want to waste anybody else's time.
Okay, I'm reading this for everybody on YouTube as well. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Desert Hot Springs, amending section 17, a dot, 12 dot, 080, convenience stores, commercial districts, and 17 dot, 16 dash, 060, convenience stores, industrial districts of the city of Desert Hot Springs. Municipal code regarding convenience stores. So can we have, with that mouthful, can we have the, the, the staff report, please?
Yes. The proposed ordinance seeks to amend the, the convenience store standards in both commercial and industrial districts. The main requirement is to remove the requirement that convenience stores be separated by 1,000 feet from each other or a school, and delete the requirement related to payphones, since that's obsolete. As you may know, one of the big things about convenience stores, attached to gas stations or even unattached to gas stations, a lot of times they go across the street from each other. So this 1,000 foot would prevent two gas stations, for example, at an exit on our freeway. So staff is recommending that planning commission recommend to council approval of this ordinance. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
This is Commissioner Duffel. I have one. Rebecca, currently, if, if I'm correct, this is kind of a little bit of housecleaning. We currently have convenience stores within 1,000 feet of each other in Desert Hot Springs, don't we?
That's correct. In doing some of this research, we just, we found that some were even approved as recent as a couple of years ago's in violation of this ordinance. So it, it's something that everyone forgot was in the code until I went to go do some research on a new proposal. And so we, we hadn't been abiding by it really prior to this, so it is a cleanup.
Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it. That was my only question, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And as a guilty party, from two years ago, I can tell you that we didn't know about this ordinance.
Correct.
This ordinance, we probably would have done something about it. But, you know, that, that is then, this is now. I'm sure there are other questions, so I'm just going to turn it over to whoever wants to go. Dawn, are you on?
I'm on, and I do have a couple... I'm on, and I do have a couple of questions always. So we got Starbucks in, you know, New York City or San Francisco, five hundred feet from each other. I don't really see a problem with convenience stores being across the street from each other. My problem is, and I would like to hone down on this, is with the payphone situation. I think i- if I, if I read this correctly, you're restricting payphones or you're adding payphones, I'm unclear.
So the previous ordinance had a requirement that it, when payphones were installed, that they could, they wouldn't take incoming calls. We just cleaned it up and removed it since payphones aren't installed anymore, um, these days at all.
Like full stop?
Full stop, we just removed any discussion of payphones from the code.
Because who needs payphones now unless you're a drug dealer? So excellent.
Yeah, you're exactly right, thank you. Anybody else?
No questions.
No, Mr. Chair.
I, I particularly are, I'm interested in one provision that's kind of buried deep in this. So I hope you don't mind, I'm, I'm gonna ask a question, Rebecca.
Okay.
And it's about the provision about being, I believe, a thousand feet away from a, a school.
Okay, what's your-
I believe that's been withdrawn, is that correct?
Correct, all distance requirements are being proposed to be removed, we're letting, as they say, the free market dictate location and what makes sense for a convenience store.
Yeah, okay, and the rationale behind the thousand feet was that kids would be going to the, the corner market on their, um, lunch breaks to, uh, do nefarious things. I'm kinda hoping we're beyond that. I'm kinda hoping. That's kinda, it feels so fifties to me.
Honestly, I don't think a thousand feet's gonna make a difference, they'll go further if they really want to.
Yeah, I'm kind of-
Right.
But I, I thought that was an interesting piece.
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, just, just speaking from experience, um, our seven eleven, uh, corner store on Pearson Boulevard, just down the street from the high school, that's well beyond a thousand feet, and I, I've got to concur with what you said, uh, as well as Rebecca. Uh, I don't think it would matter if it was five thousand feet away, if it's the closest one, they're gonna find a way to it.
I got it.
Right, and, and, excuse me, this is Dawn, it, um, you know, someone wants to go buy a Twinkie, they're underage, they can't buy alcohol, they're gonna get carted, it's not a situation. So like, go let them get a HoHo or a Twinkie, or a Reese's Peanut Butter Cup, or a Monster drink, I don't, you know, you know what I mean? Like, why make it difficult?
Yeah, I, I think it was kind of like the, the whole fifties thing about keeping the kids in school. And I think that-
Well, that's, that's-
A little far for you-
Yeah, Larry, but that's, that's the school's problem, it's not the convenience store problem, and it's not the city problem, it's the school problem.
Yeah, okay.
And the parent's problem. That's my opinion, anyway.
Got it. Anybody else?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Now, because this is an ordinance recommendation, we're recommending to the City Council, we still have to open a public hearing. So we're gonna do that right now, and we're gonna open the public hearing and take public testimony from those in favor. Anybody from the public wanna speak to us about this? Gerald, do you have anybody?
No, Mr. Chair, there is nobody wishing to speak on the side of, just so everyone knows, Paula Turner has joined, but she's indicated that she just wants to listen, she doesn't intend to speak on any agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Anybody opposed?
Yeah.
Anybody with a neutral position? Okay, God love the person who added that one. But we'll go okay with that. Okay, at this point then, I'm closing the public hearing, since there was no testimony. And, um, we have any further discussion? Okay, do we have a recommendation to the City Council?
Mr. Chair, this is Planning Commissioner Duffel. I would to move to recommend to the city, that the City Council approve and read by title only attached ordinance, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Desert Hot Springs, amending sections one seven point one two point zero eight zero, convenience stores, commercial districts, and one seven dot one six dot zero six zero, convenience stores, industrial districts of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code Regarding Convenience Stores.
Okay, do we have a second?
One second.
Hey, Commissioner Aragon, thank you. Okay, any further discussion?
This is Dawn, I don't know what all those code sections are, but I just wanna make sure that we have open convenience stores wherever the heck they wanna be, without payphones, and, um, that's that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, any other comments?
No.
Good enough. Okay, with that, I'm gonna call for roll call vote.
Commissioner Ar- Mr. Duffel? Aye. Commissioner Griffiths?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Dell?
Aye.
Chairman Buchanan?
I'm sorry?
Chairman Buchanan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's good, we're gonna move on to, uh, item number five, according to the City Council of the City of Desert Hot Springs, California, amending Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code Section seventeen dot, four zero dot one one zero, fences, walls, and hedges. And with that, I'm gonna ask for the staff.
Thank you, Chairman, Commission, I wanna point out on this one for people who are listening, or calling in, that the staff has updated the proposed ordinance on the website today, to clarify due to some responses we received to this ordinance. And so if you pre, if you printed this ordinance previously, please go back and take a look as we are proposing an updated ordinance. This ordinance does seek to, um, change a few things in our walls, fences, and hedges ordinance code. The three main functions are to change the requirements and application process, so that findings are not required, as they are cumbersome and not needed anymore. Most of the fencing material types are prevalent throughout the city that we're permitting, so findings don't really make sense and slow down the process now. The second is to allow for more options for block walls and vinyl fencing, basically, the, the colors just need to match, we're not specifying certain colors, and just saying that they now have to match the building. And the third is to allow for chain link fencing for properties over five acres, where code compliance manager deems that the fencing is needed to prevent nuisances. The main part that was updated from previous code was the chart that talks about the height, we've cleaned it up to try and make it more understanding. Basically, the idea is that in residential districts, the front yard setback, you can only have a fence up to four feet, and then in any rear or side area, so past the first twenty foot front setback, they're allowed to have six feet. And then we've clarified in the commercial and industrial area that the same thing on the front or street side, they can only have four feet if it's a solid block wall, but if they have wrought iron, they're able to fence in at six feet in that front yard setback. And that also commercial earn, commercial districts are allowed eight foot block walls, abutting residential districts and industrial districts for, and at eight feet and industrial. And that's all I have, I can answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions?
No questions.
I, Dawn always has questions.
Go ahead.
What's the deal about wood fencing? Is that, I, I understand that it's not allowed, why is it not allowed?
Wood fencing is not currently permitted in the current code, we're not changing that. Wood fencing is, is not permitted in many different areas, in different cities, mostly due to issues here probably with wind, and then issues with maintenance. Wood fences deteriorate rather quickly and require annual maintenance, and most homeowners don't maintain them, so most cities have prohibited wood fencing, uh, within the last ten years.
I live in a home that has wood fencing that's been around for a couple of decades, and it's, it's, it's hunkering down if it's installed properly, so that's my, that goes on to my second question, is, um, how is the city monitoring the standard of construction with this stuff? Cause you can put in some half ass shit, but it, it's, uh, right, but it, um, and of course, it's gonna get wind blown down, but if you put in something structural, posts and two by sixes and this and that and the other, you can, you can do it, and it looks way less ghetto.
Yeah, as stated, we currently don't allow wood fences, and, and staff is not proposing to allow staff, to allow for wood fencing. We are proposing under vinyl fencing, we, we've reached out to our engineering consultant to ask them to put together some standards to make sure that they do with, or with, withstand our wind load. So installs will, obviously, are usually either vinyl or block wall, and they will have to meet the city standard to be installed.
Right, but my question is, why is the city standard not consider wood fencing?
Again, it, that's the way the current code is, I, I did not have any request to make changes to the wood fencing requirement, usually, again, it's an aesthetic issue, they, they deteriorate, they change color, and, and they're not usually maintained, so a lot of cities have stopped allowing wood fencing in their community for, for aesthetic reasons.
Okay, well, that's not my, that's not my opinion. But, um, I'd be interested to see, uh, your studies, so please forward them to me.
I'm sorry, what studies?
The studies that you've done on wood fencing.
I haven't done studies, I've just, from my experience, I know that most cities have stopped allowing them for, for, usually for aesthetic reasons, it's just from my personal experience, I don't have any studies.
Oh, okay, well, you know, I, 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 I'm a, I'm a CPA, and I'm a scientist, and I need studies, so if you can forward me something that will help me understand why this, I don't know. Wood, wood is one of the strongest things on the planet.
The, the city can allow wood fencing, but in the past, the council approved an ordinance at some point in the past that prohibited wood fencing. So that, that's, we, we're not proposing to change that at this time.
Well, why don't you, can you forward me all that information? Because I just, I, I fully disagree, and on the Planning Commission, I don't, I don't agree with this, and I think planning should not have, we, we wanna look like Palm Springs, not like a ghetto hot springs, and so, I, wood fencing is critical.
Okay, is that your comment, Dawn?
That's, I'm, I'm gonna stop now, yes.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Nope. All right, well, then I'm gonna say something. I have some experience with, with, uh, wood fencing in my neighborhood and adjoining neighborhoods. I'm gonna tell you something right now, Commissioner Griffiths, I understand what you're saying, if they are properly maintained. Here's the problem. In every one of my experiences in my neighborhood and neighborhoods adjoining my neighborhood, we have deteriorating wood fencing without people keeping them up. And that's just the way it seems to be right now. An owner of wood fencing needs to be responsible for it and needs to keep it up. In our desert climate, it's very, very difficult. And so you have to be very, very vigilant on this. And so I'm sorry, but I totally disagree with you on this. I would not be in favor of allowing wood fencing. And while I'm at it, I'm not that wild about chain link either.
Hell, no.
And everybody knows that. Anybody who's been around for the last dozen years or so knows I've been opposed to, uh, chain link fencing. I know that this has been included partially, and you correct me, Rebecca, and I hope you will, if I'm wrong, but I have an issue with, uh, chain link because it traps garbage. That's all it seems to do, and the owners don't seem to take responsibility for it. Also, if you have a good set of Colt butter, uh, I'm sorry, uh, bolt cutters, you're in business, you can go ahead and cut a hole through that without any problem at all. You can't do that with the block wall.
I, I'll be happy to respond, yeah, we're, I mean, nobody's gonna block wall their vacant property. We're, we're not allowing chain link on developed property, it's not permitted whatsoever. What we're trying to do is give code enforcement an additional tool for properties that are having a lot of issues with things like dumping, where people are just backing up to their car and, and dumping, um, couches and things onto vacant property, large vacant properties, we're only even allowing it on five acre or larger properties. So, and, and they're just, they're not allowed to just get a permit, it has to have had a previous nuisance and approved by the code compliance manager that the nuisance that they have that they feel will be solved by a chain link fence. So again, we're not allowing it on developed property, it's only on large vacant that have code enforcement issues.
But I want to know, is code compliance gonna forward up on this? Because, uh, uh, you know, following up on this is kind of important, because, you know, you make an ordinance, you make things happen, and then, I can give you examples right around where I live, where people have had chain link fences that then driven-
Yeah, we, we talked with code enforcement about this, and we made sure that there was a maintenance section, it, it hap, we didn't actually even have to add a, a maintenance standard into the code, it already exists, and we are working with code enforcement, and they want the city to look good as well, and that's the direction from the city manager, so I think as long as everything stays the same, code enforcement will, will keep following up, because they also wanna make sure, especially on these vacant properties, I think they visit regularly to make sure that there isn't other issues going on out there, and so they're out there pretty regularly doing inspections.
Excellent, thank you. Dawn, did you wanna come back?
No, I'm here.
Did you wanna come back into this conversation?
No, 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 I'm good, I'm good, I, I, you know, I, I, I have my own, uh, opinions, and, um, you know what, the one thing I would like to ask is if you guys could give me your, all of you, your individual email addresses, since we cannot, uh, meet live, that would be fun.
I'll be happy to do that. Anybody, uh, anybody else have anything on this, uh, particular issue?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Duffel.
Go ahead.
I, I share the same concerns, uh, that you do about the wood fencing and the chain link fencing. And I'm sitting here trying to figure out a way, uh, to make something work for these vacant, large vacant properties where there is no fencing, and we're having issues with dumping and things like that. And, uh, I'm sitting here racking my brain- And I'm sitting here racking my brain and I feel the same way you do about the chain link fences. I really don't think that that's the way to go. My personal opinion on it, if we're looking to clean things up and prevent illegal dump, and I'd like to know if this had been considered by staff at any point, changing that over from a chain link fencing to a, to split rail fencing for large areas. That's usually what I see consistent throughout different communities for large unoccupied properties, rather than having big, gaudy chain link fences. They put in split rail fences, keeps it looking nice, but it also keeps people from getting in and dumping things.
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry, you asked me if I wanted to jump back into the conversation. Larry, and I'm sorry, I am. I just want it to look classy. Chain link isn't classy. You know, front, 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 front street. A lot of that stuff isn't classy. And so, you know, anyway, there's a whole lot of ways to work around this and I'm not in a position to propose them tonight. However, I just want to oppose the opposal of any sort of fencing stuff. We just need to be flexible. The backyard, the front yard, it's all different.
Okay, Dawn, now, I'm going to go ahead and I hope you don't mind. And this is difficult because we're not in front of each other. But Richard asked the specific question of Rebecca, I believe, or he asked for her comment. And so, we're going to allow her the opportunity to respond to Richard.
Absolutely.
So, the city, no one has brought forward an option for split rail. We currently allow posts and wire, which doesn't seem to do much, which has a similar effect because it's the same posts and then just wire instead of the wood across. But no, I mean, split rail definitely could be something that could be proposed to city council as an option in addition to or instead of.
What I've noticed as far as the temporary fences with the wood posts and the steel cables is fixed out at night and they're stealing the cables.
Oh, jeez.
So, if you remove the cables and you put in a split rail fence rather than something that can be stolen easily and recycled, the fence coming down.
And I also want to clarify that the current code does allow for chain link on very large lots, like one acre and on lots over 10,000, as long as it's not in the front. So, they allow like big one-acre lots to have chain link in the back, you know. But that's in the current code.
Thank you.
Dawn, you have a comment?
No, I said that's cool. That's good.
All right, good. Any other comments?
No.
Any further questions? Okay, with that, I think we can move on, I hope. Gerald, am I out of order here at all? Gerald?
I'm here. Was there a motion on the?
Am I moving towards the motion phase? Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Good. So, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, this is Planning Commissioner Duffel. I would like to motion that the planning commission recommend to the city of Desert Hot Springs, the city council approve and read by title only the attached ordinance, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Desert Hot Springs, California, amending Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code Section 17 dot 40 dot 110, fences, walls, edges with one adjustment, replacing the chain link fencing with split rail.
And you're proposing that at six feet, at the same height allowance? Or did you want to do it at a lower height?
That would be at four foot.
Four foot, okay. And is that in addition to the post and wire continuing? Or do you want to replace post and wire with split rail?
I would like to replace the post and wire with split rail.
So, the way I'm hearing the motion is to replace on the chart the post and wire with split rail and remove the chain link on vacant property allowance.
That would be correct.
Do we have a second for that one? I am not hearing a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, Jim, we have a motion and a second to replace the chain link and the post and wire with split rail. Oh, boy. I personally don't know that I can go along with that. That's okay because I can be in the minority on occasion. I've done that before.
Yeah, I personally don't go along with it either, for the record.
So, we have a motion and a second on the table. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote unless we have any further discussion.
No further discussion.
If it was six foot, I might be amendable.
Okay.
I can be a little bit flexible. I can amend the.
And if you let the chain link in the back, behind it, I might be amendable.
I'm not, I'm not changing the, anything with the ordinance regarding chain link fencing except for, I'm proposing changing the ordinance to disallow six-foot chain link fencing from wrapping around.
Disallow the chain foot, yeah, I'm totally in support of that. And I'm totally in support of the wood fence. However, I don't think tearing down the chain link fence and taking it down to four feet, I can't approve that.
So, for clarifications, because I'm hearing some different things, on the split rail, are we okay with chain link on a vacant property, just not on the frontage? And only in a.
I am.
Split rail on the.
Dawn is.
Front? Or?
Dawn is.
No, my concern is the, my concern is the split rail or the chain link on the front. I'm not concerned with the.
So, it's not removing the chain link allowance, but just along the frontage?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for.
Or hiding the chain link.
I believe, I'm a little bit confused with exactly what the motion is. If it would be amenable to Mr. Chair and the commission with the motion maker, please restate the motion as specifically as possible and then we can go ahead and see if we get a second.
Thank you, Jennifer. That's a good thing.
I appreciate it.
Okay, what my motion was is to recommend that the planning commission recommend to the city, or recommend to the city council, the city of Desert Hot Springs, approve and read by title only the attached ordinance, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Desert Hot Springs, California, amending Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code Section 17 dot 40 dot 110, fences, walls.
Well, no one's reading the fucking, the code sections right now. So, just tell us what it means.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if I may, two things I'd like to point out public, so just to mind what we say. And in addition to that, we're not reading the code section. He's just making a motion and part of that motion is the title of the ordinance.
Thank you. Now, can everybody kind of calm down a little bit? Let Richard make his motion, please?
Mr. Chair, let me start one more time.
Thank you.
Like to make a motion for the planning commission to recommend to the city council that the city of, that they approve and read by title only the attached ordinance and the city council of the city of Desert Hot Springs, California, amending Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code Sections 17 dot 40 dot 110, fences, walls, and hedges with the following amendments. Amendment one was to remove the chain link fencing on the frontage of vacant properties and replace that with six-foot split rail. And to remove the post, the current post and wire fencing.
Okay, is that an acceptable motion? Jennifer?
Yes, Rebecca, do you have everything that you need? I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page because I was getting a little confused.
Yes, I understand what we're gotten, how to make that motion.
Okay, now, Jim, is your second still appropriate?
I'm okay with it the way it is now, yes.
Okay. Dawn, do you have a comment?
Always, but I'll refrain right now.
Okay. Commissioner Ergon?
Questions, I'm good.
All right, good. I'm good as well. With that, the motion and the second's been made. And we don't appear to have any further discussion, so let's go ahead and call for a roll call vote.
Mr. Chair, I believe we lost Commissioner Griffiths again, didn't we?
No, I'm here.
Okay, fantastic. My computer said that you had dropped out.
Yeah.
I dropped off of the computer, but I'm on the phone.
Okay, fantastic.
Commissioner Ergon?
Hi.
Commissioner Duffel?
Aye.
Commissioner Griffiths?
That would be Mrs., but yes, aye.
Vice Chairman Nendell?
Aye.
Chairman Buchanan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, folks, we're into the home stretch. We got one last item, item number seven here. And does anybody need a break?
Nope.
Commissioner Duffel, I'm playing, Mr. Chair.
All right, I'm glad everybody's okay. I'm not too sure I am, but I'm hanging in. This is a good thing. So.
Well, you can actually go to the bathroom and talk on the cell phone and it'd be okay. No one's going to know.
Yeah, well, you probably hear it though.
There's a button called mute. So, anyway, go ahead. I'm all in.
Okay, the next one is amending chapter 17, or dot 181, definitions of testing facilities to allow for cannabis facilities that are licensed by the federal government itself or by the state government itself. Oh, Rebecca, give us a second for it on this one.
On this one, the title explains it all. All we're proposing is to amend the definition of testing facilities for those that are contracted directly with the state or the federal government. That's all I have.
Okey-dokey.
Dawn can add a little, Dawn can add a little bit on this because I'm familiar with the cannabis industry.
Thank you.
It's a big, enormous pain and you have to outsource testing to LA or San Diego or wherever, outside of Coachella Valley and outside of Desert Hot Springs. So, if this passes, then we'll be able to test here and the money in the local community won't have to go outside. Just so you know.
Yes, sounding like a good thing. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Jennifer, just for kind of clarification purposes as well. This, we already allowed testing, obviously, in our city. This would just kind of expand the definition and it's primarily for those entities that are licensed by the state, the federal or state government themselves for research and development. There are entities out there that are licensed by the federal government, actually, that are going with testing R and D. And so, we just wanted to make sure that we, that that industry was also captured within our ordinance because currently our ordinance is limited to California. So, we wanted to make sure to capture that. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, ma'am. Anything else before we go into the public hearing?
No, Mr. Chair, not for me.
Thank you. All right, excellent. We're open to public hearing right now and take public testimony for those who are in favor. Speak now or forever hold your peace.
Are you talking to, Dawn's in favor.
Well, no, I'm talking to the public, actually, Dawn.
Oh, okay, all right, just checking.
You're typically not the public, okay.
Mr. Chair, we have no.
I mean, I could be the public or I could not be, but whatever.
Yeah, okay. Now, Gerald, do we have someone?
We have no public testimony, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. So, nobody opposed, correct? How about anybody with a neutral position? Okay. Going, going on. With that, I'm closing the public hearing. And discussion and questions to staff. Anybody have anything?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. All right, good. The planning commission recommends, it's a recommendation to the city council, that the city council approve and read only the attached ordinance, the ordinance to the city council, Desert Hot Springs, et cetera. So, does anybody have a motion on this one?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Duffel and I'd like to read it for the public. I would motion to approve that the planning commission recommend to the city council, that the city council approve and read title only the attached ordinance, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Desert Hot Springs, amending chapter 17 point 180, definitions of testing facility to allow for cannabis facilities that are licensed by the federal government itself or by the state government itself.
Thank you, Commissioner Duffel. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Griffiths, second.
All right. Okay, with that, do we have any further discussion?
No, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was saying, no, sir, Mr. Chair.
That's excellent. So, I'm going to call for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Ergon?
Aye.
Commissioner Duffel?
Aye.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Nendell?
Aye.
Chairman Buchanan?
Aye. Okay, with that, that concludes our business here. We have Chair and Planning Commission member reports. Do we have any reports?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Duffel one more time.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to speak up and recognize our staff all over the city, especially during this. especially during this, uh, coronavirus crisis. Uh, we've really stepped up and, and we've met the moment, as the governor has liked to, to put it. Um, I'd like to specifically thank, uh, the staff that we're working with this evening for getting all of this together for us in such a quick and organized fashion. And I'd also like to give a, a special, uh, thank you as well to our first responders here in the city of Desert Hot Springs. We're doing an absolutely phenomenal job with keeping up with their calls, uh, in a timely fashion, despite what we are going through. Thank you.
Excellent. Anybody else? Okay, then I will, I will just echo what, uh, Commissioner Duffel had to say. Uh, I want to particularly thank Gerald for putting this thing together.
Absolutely.
This is not the easiest thing on earth to do. And so thank so much. And also for Rebecca and for Jennifer, who are kind of, I, I don't know how to say it, maybe shepherding us through this.
Right, absolutely. You're exactly right, Larry. You know, we have to have the shepherds.
Yeah, and, uh, Patricia? Hello, thank you. Thank you always for your work. Anyway, with that, I'm gonna move on to the, uh, Community Development Director's report. You guys-
All right, well, I, I hope, I hope those of you in the desert are enjoying the beautiful sunset tonight. It's about to, it's about to go down, so take a minute and check it out. It's meaningful. Bless to be on you. Off.
Okay, uh, Rebecca, are you there?
Yeah, so I just wanted to remind everybody who's watching, um, that our, we, our comment period for our general plan EIR closed, um, this month and that we are getting really close to the end. And so anyone who wants to be part of the public hearing process, I want to remind them to sign up on our website to be notified of the public hearing. Um, because that, I think we're, we're as close to possibly advertising a public hearing, um, for the next planning commission. It's not official yet, but I'm expecting that the general plan and zoning ordinance update will be on the planning commission in May. So anyone who wants to attend or be notified officially of the hearing, just remember to sign up on our website so that they get notifications. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, any public comments at this point? Anybody else in the room have anything to say?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thank you so much. Hey, everybody's been really good tonight, helped me along a lot and I really appreciate it. So with that, we are adjourned.